I would like to call to order the Emeryville Planning Commission Regular Meeting of January 24th, 2019. Charlie, can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Donaldson.
Here.
Commissioner Hidalgo.
Here.
Commissioner Keller.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Young has an excused absence this evening, and Vice Chair Guerrero also has an excused absence, and Chair Barrera.
Here.
So we have a quorum of five commissioners present.
All right. We'll move on to our next item, public comment. I have one speaker slip here for this section of the agenda. Alicia? You have three minutes, Alicia.
Hi, good evening. I'm an Emeryville resident, so I'm here today to speak about the short-term rental ordinance, which I believe this Planning Commission passed in 2017. I'm fully supportive of this ordinance. Unfortunately, from my experience, I don't think it's being enforced by city staff. My partner and I live next to a single-family home that's been operating as an Airbnb for about three years. The property's not been operating in compliance with the ordinance. We've been in touch with both Airbnb staff and city staff about our concerns with the issues related to the listing, such as multiple rentals per week, parties with loud music, overflowing trash bins, exposure to cigarette smoke, and vehicles blocking both the sidewalk and our driveway. Airbnb pretty much refuses to do anything about it, saying they can't take any action against the host. And numerous emails with city staff over the past seven months have not resulted in any change in the situation. I fully recognize that city staff, their workload is probably very high, they have a lot of responsibilities, but most recent emails have gone completely unanswered, so I really don't feel like the concerns of residents are being listened to. So, and it really feels like we're living next to a hotel, which is really unfortunate. And it's also very sad to us that a home that could be used as a rental for a family is not being made available on the market, especially in the Bay Area with our extreme housing crisis. So I'm asking that the Planning Commission take a look at how the ordinance is being implemented and enforced. I'm also asking that city staff take resident concerns about violations more seriously, and make information about the ordinance more accessible to residents and property owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie, can I ask a quick question related to that?
Sure.
Who in the city is in charge of enforcing, or like dealing with complaints for the short-term rental ordinance?
Well, they're being fielded right now by Diana Kena, the Associate Planner, who was responsible for writing the ordinance, but we really don't have a code enforcement mechanism in place for that, so.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. We'll move on to the next item, which is approval of the action minutes of December 13th, 2018. Are there any comments on the minutes from December? Any changes? You are not here.
I've moved approval. Seconded.
Okay.
All right, and is that without exception? So Commissioner Thompson will abstain because she was not here at that meeting. We still have four commissioners who were here, and that is sufficient to approve them. So we will record this as a four-I-one abstention vote. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and next is the Community Development Director's report.
Thank you. First, to report to you what the City Council has done since you last met. Your last meeting was on December 13th, and they've had two meetings since then, on December 18th and on January 15th. On December 18th, the Council unanimously approved the conceptual plans for the redesign of 40th Street from the Oakland border at Adeline to the IKEA entrance, which was prepared in response to the direction the Council gave at their October 16th meeting. This plan includes a two-way bikeway on the north side of the street and two bus-only lanes in each direction, or one bus-only lane in each direction, I should say, two bus-only lanes total. The Council's approval included one set of changes, which was to reconfigure the median between Horton and Hubbard Streets to eliminate the left-turn lane from 40th Street into the target parking lot, and to lengthen the left-turn lane from 40th Street onto Horton Street. Staff and consultants will now prepare a traffic analysis, detailed cost estimates, and a final concept plan that can be used for grant applications, and there will be further public review of these plans before final approval is sought from the City Council. On January 15th, the Council unanimously approved a one-year extension of the Doyle Street Muse Project, which you may recall is a six-unit residential project at 5876 and 5880 Doyle Street. That was approved by the Council after a recommendation from the Commission. It was approved on November 7th, 2017, and it would have expired on November 7th, 2018, but the applicant applied for this extension. The Council granted it, so the entitlements are now good until November 7th of 2019. On the wireless telecommunications facility regulations that you recommended approval of at your last meeting, the Council unanimously approved these amendments, and they passed both an urgency ordinance so that the amendments would take effect immediately, and also a regular ordinance. The Council authorized the city manager to negotiate an agreement with the railroad for an easement for the South Bayfront Pedestrian Bicycle Bridge. They approved the scope of work for the bridge and the Horton Landing Park project, and they authorized the Public Works Director to bid the project. So things are slowly moving along on this bridge that has been in our general plan since 1988. So hopefully we'll see it in our lifetimes. On the 4300 San Pablo Avenue Affordable Housing Project, the Council reviewed the proposal for an affordable senior housing project on the old Recreation Center site, and they directed that the matter be referred to the Housing Committee and the Commission on Aging for advice as to whether to include intergenerational housing as a component of the project. And after that happens, we'll bring it back to Council for direction and then issue the RFP for the project. On cannabis regulations, the Council directed that an ordinance be prepared to amend those regulations, which are in Chapter 28 of Title V of the Municipal Code, to allow products to be viewable from the public right-of-way. That currently is prohibited by our cannabis regulations. However, since this amendment is not part of the planning regulations, it will not be coming to you for your review and recommendation. In other news, I just want to report to you that we have signed up those of you who are not already members of the American Planning Association, which would be Commissioners Thompson, Hidalgo, and Barrera. And so that would be Commissioners Donaldson, Guerrero, Keller, and Young. We've signed you up for APA membership, so you should be getting stuff from the APA soon.
I think I already am a member. I know I pay my dues for AICP, and along with that.
Maybe what I said was not clear. What I meant to say was that you, Commissioner Barrera, and Commissioners Thompson are already members, and the other four are not, and but now are.
And I've been getting things in email.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Glad to hear it. In addition, the National Planning Conference for APA is going to be held in San Francisco this year for the first time since 2005, April 13th through 16th, and we intend to sign all of you up for that conference on the city's dime. So, just for the base membership, base registration, not all the bells and whistles. And so we hope you'll all be able to attend. And that's several months away, so more information will be forthcoming.
So just to let you know, I'm also in the program.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Oh, great. Are you doing a?
An educational session on the Oakland Eco Block.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
All right, great. Finally, I am pleased to announce, as you may have heard, well, maybe you didn't hear, that the demolition permit for the Nady site was issued last Friday, and...
How did I miss that?
It is being demolished, as you can see. This picture was taken this morning. The office building is basically a pile of rubble, right there in front of you. The warehouse building has not been attacked yet, but will be soon, and hopefully the entire site will be cleared within a few weeks, and then we can move forward with, hopefully, processing a building permit for the building that you approved three years ago. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Charlie?
No, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Such good news, thank you. The bridge, this, and all the good stuff.
I thought you'd like that.
I rode by, through the park on Monday, and the building was still there, so to see this, but if that just happened today, or the photograph was today.
Well, yes, the permit was issued on last Friday, and Monday was a holiday for some people, and so the demolition started on Tuesday.
Good, right on.
Yep.
Excellent, thank you. Well, moving on to disclosure of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications. Does anybody have anything to report?
No.
All right. We'll move on to the public hearing. It is Marketplace Redevelopment Project for Parcel B. It's the consideration of approving a new final development plan for Parcel B of the Marketplace Redevelopment Project. And it is also rescinding the previously approved FDP. Presentation from Maru. Thank you, Maru.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here with the site project planner for this proposal. A little bit of a background on the Marketplace development. As you may recall, the Marketplace PUD, PDP, was approved by the Council back in 2008. And what the PUD, PDP, does is that it lays out the approval of the site plan, the mix of uses, heights of individual buildings, and the general massing. Subsequently, between February 2015 and 2016, the Commission approved FDPs for four new buildings, an expanded and renovated park, and realignment of Shellmount Street, and creation of 62nd and 63rd Streets. So, and the different buildings are outlined here in terms of where they are, in terms of whether they've been built or under construction or in plan check. So this is the approved PUD, PDP, which was back in 2008. And just to get you oriented, this is the railroad on the top. This is the bridge across the railway lines. And the proposal is basically a line of buildings along the railroad, and this is the realigned Shellmount, creation of 63rd, 62nd, and this is the park and the different buildings. As part of this approval, the massing and the heights were also approved. And again, to orient you, this is the railroad, and this is the bridge, and these are the PUD buildings that were approved. In terms, as I mentioned, the Commission has approved FDPs for all the buildings except for Building F. And so this is what we have in terms of entitlements that exist today, and we are talking about Building B. And as you may recall, as you can see, this is the configuration of Parcel B. What is being proposed now is, is the site plan is something like this. So it kind of tells you the gap between A and B is a little bit different than it used to be in the prior entitlements. But going back to what the PUD is, the PUD is what rules, and this is where we would be looking at for, in terms of consistency of the site planning. In terms of project proposal, as I mentioned, the FDP for Parcel B was approved back in 2016. At that time, it accommodated parking for A with ground-floor retail. The garage was to provide parking for existing commercial users that have been served by previous surface parking lots for Parcel C, and that are being served by existing parking lot, Parcel A. City Center wishes to amend the FDP that was approved for Parcel B in order to accommodate the office space. So that, and that is what the Commission reviewed in December in the study session. It was a 113-foot-tall building, eight-story, which included ground-floor retail levels of parking, and then three levels of office space. So what I'm going to now go through is the summary of changes that have occurred since what the Commission saw in December. One is a slight increase in retail area from 14,000 square feet to 15,800 square feet. The solar panels have been included, per Commission comments. The primary servicing of the retail area are now being provided from the back of the building. Again, Commission comment. EV parking spaces have been included and identified. The north and south elevations have been further developed and refined, including adding windows on the stairs, which I believe was also a Commission comment. Some of the location of some service areas have been revised. Bike room has been moved north with better access from lobby, and the landscape plan has been further developed. So this is the existing condition at the site. I showed a few more pictures at the study session. I think at this point, we are all familiar with the state of the site. So this is where the Parcel B site plan is. The ground floor has basically remained the same as you have seen, other than location of the bike room, and also alarming doors at the back of the retail space, so that servicing can occur from back of the building. These are different levels of the parking structures, and then these are the three levels of office. Here's the rooftop, as you can see, you can see the location of the solar panels that are being proposed at this point. The vehicle and bike circulation has not changed from what you saw last month, and this is the servicing plan which has changed, which now the primary servicing is from the back of the house. This is the west elevation in front of Shellmount Street. So what you see, these levels, this is going to be articulated with public art. Same is true for the east elevation. A little bit on, and these are the north and south elevations, and the main change is adding windows. To note, no public art is being proposed on the north and the south elevations, so it's only the east and west where public art will be proposed. So let's talk a little bit about public art. As we had sort of discussed at last month's meeting, the development agreement, which was approved by the Council, allows for the use of public art funds for building elevations. And the applicant is proposing the use of public art for its west and east elevations, as I mentioned. And the Public Art Committee recommended approval of the Public Market Public Art Final Plan this month, which allocates $750,000 for the west elevation and $250,000 for the east elevation. This plan also identifies the artists that will work, the group of artists that will be selected to work on each elevation. The Public Art Final Plan was attached to your staff report, and you'll be hearing more about that from the applicant as well. So just quickly, this is the west elevation, and this is where the, which clearly identifies the location of the artwork. This is one of the examples of art that one of the artists will, artist pool has been selected. And like I mentioned, Dorca will be walking you through different, to give you an idea of what kind of art will be present in her presentation. And this is the east elevation, same thing. This kind of gives you a panoramic view of the building. I am not going to show other renderings and elevations because I know that the applicant has extensive presentation, so you'll see the pretty pictures in their presentation. What I will walk you through is conformity with the general plan and its consistency with the approved PUD, PDP. As you note, the general plan designation for this site is mixed use with residential, where residential office, retail uses, and associated parking are permitted. All that is consisting with what is being proposed. The table shows you the PDP and the FDP. There is a slight difference. If you look at the column, it is a little bit smaller overall. The height of the building is same as that was approved in the PUD. The building, the whole project is slightly smaller in terms of having about 90,000 square feet of less commercial space. In terms of conformity with the Shellmount Streetscape Design Guidelines, these guidelines outline sidewalk widths, paving materials, streetscape furniture, and design facilities, the design of facilities such as bus stops. The plans are consistent with the tentative map approval that was previously determined to be consistent with the guidelines, and most of these improvements are already in place. In terms of environmental review, EIR for the Marketplace PUD was certified by the Council when it approved the PUD, and that applies to the FDP. In addition, we have developed an environmental checklist, which was attached to the staff report that confirms that there have been no substantial changes in the proposed project or to the circumstances under which the project will be undertaken, and that no new information of substantial importance exists that which would require preparation of a subsequent or a supplemental EIR. Let's now go to this big pile of paper that you have in front of you. There are a couple of things. One is staff comments. On the first page, you will see a memo from our fire assistant, Fire Assistant Marshal. He has added, issued some additional conditions of approval. So this, for the record, I would like to be included in, to the conditions of approval that are in your staff report. In addition to that, we received an email, which is on the second page in your pile, and this is a request by the applicant to change the name, the applicant name, from City Center to AGCCRP, Public Market LP. Staff has no problem with that, and so for the record, I would like to mention that these changes would be applicable in the resolution. And the resolution, the finalized resolution, will include this change. The next are comment letters that have been received. We received two letters from Verhem, one from Jeff Sears, another from Richard Robinson. There is, after that, Mark Stephens, that's the applicant's response letter to the Verhem letters. There are additional two letters of support for the project. And in the end, there are three letters from a law firm called, I'm not sure how to pronounce that, but I'm going to just give it a try, Lozo Drury LLP. They have, over the last week or so, it's ending with the third letter this evening, they had some concerns regarding the EIR. These were responded to by a letter from Holland and Knight, which is the applicant's counsel. And the last letter by this law firm indicated that they, that all their issues are resolved, and they have, they no longer have any issues to this project. So that's where that is. So that concludes my presentation. Our recommendation is to approve the project, subject to conditions of approval in the staff report, as well as in the memo by Cesar Avila, and rescinding of the Final Development Plan 1501, which was the approval that was made for this site back in 2016. The applicant does have a presentation. If you have questions for me now or later, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, I have a few questions for you, Maru. And I don't know if you have the plans there, and this is just, I don't know if it's house cleaning, or is this something that's, I've never been able to answer. On the plans, on page 2A.15, it shows existing fire hydrants, then there's two blue dots along Shellmount Street, but along the railroad tracks, there are these smaller black dots, and I never could quite identify what those are, if those are new fire extinguishers, or... So I was just kind of curious to what those were denoting for us, because there's blue dots, but not black dots on the key. So we're on A2.15?
Those are the extent to which we're...
Can you please come up to the microphone?
Sir, you need to come to the microphone, please. Can you identify yourself for the record, please?
Christopher Peaty with Hart Howerton. I did that drawing. Those are the places where the fire equipment could reach, and then the places that we measure from.
Okay, so those are just points of measurement?
Yes.
Okay, okay, yeah, because I was thinking, I've never seen fire hydrants there in that point. And then, Maru, on the staff report on page four, and I think this is just more of a clerical cleanup thing, it states, I believe that it states that there are four lab levels, and I believe there are only three?
Correct, that's a typo.
Yeah, okay, so I just want to make sure that we have that clear. And then on the art memo on page 11, it says, if the owner selects the art, or my question is, in there it says that the owner, which would be City Center, selects the art for the present. What part does our art committee play in that, if the owner selects the piece, actually?
Okay, so the art committee has conducted its role by approving this final, the art plan.
Okay.
In that art plan includes, then, you know, it covers the whole public market.
Right.
And it identifies artists for, you know, the group of artists that they, that the applicant needs to pick from.
Okay, okay.
For each piece.
Okay.
So there's a table there, which kind of goes by different art pieces, and the list of artists that will be the pool. So they have to stick to that pool.
So our committee kind of gives them a framework and what kind of work with, and then the owner kind of picks the actual pieces and what they want to do.
Pieces, and that will then be approved by the Community Development Director.
Okay, very good. That's all I have for staff, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Maru? All right. We'll get the presentation from the applicant next, please, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's good to be in front of you again this evening. I want to start by just taking a little walk down memory lane back about five years ago, when we started working on this project, and there aren't many of you that are still here from back in those days. But our original goal was to create a true gathering place for the city of Emeryville, where people could come, enjoy their neighbors, have fine food, dining, live, shop, and work. And that's always been our guiding plan as we've developed this project. So, and two years ago, we came up and we were able to obtain the approvals for what is currently the FDP for Parcel B. And then I came back in front of you last month because the economics in the current environment had made it impossible for us to build that B. And you were not interested in seeing that be a parking lot, and so we worked hard to come up with a plan that would be economically viable, but also importantly, support the other uses at the public market, which are the residential, the retail, and the restaurants. And so I think we've come up with a very good plan, which, one, is less dense than the FDP, excuse me, the PDP, which was approved back, I think it was in 2008. And I also want to point out that the PDP was approved before one of the buildings in question's across the railroad track, so they had the benefit of that PDP, excuse me, PDP before they designed their building. And then, secondly, I think the design that we've presented is very much in keeping with the contextual nature of Emeryville in terms of, we think it hearkens back to its industrial past, and we think it does a very good job of presenting that. We listened to all of your comments last month, and you'll see when Christopher comes up after me to show you the changes. We've listened to all of them, incorporated those changes. And I think it's also very important to remember that we're going to be providing world-class art wrapping this building, and it's going to be something that's going to be very visually stimulating for all of the residents and tenants, and I think much more so than the buildings that you typically see lining a railroad track or Shellmount or any other building in Emeryville. Our goal is to make this a place where people from around the world want to come and check out this art, and you'll see that when Dorca comes up and makes her presentation. So with that, I'd like to ask Christopher to come up and present.
Thank you. Christopher, come on up.
Hello, everyone, Commissioners. I want to thank Maru for really presenting our project so well. Some of what I say might be repetitive, but I'll try to be as brief as I can. I'm basically going to give you a very brief overview, and then sort of address the particular changes that we made, following comments from you all last month, and then a couple other issues that have come up in the last month and in the last couple of weeks I want to address, and then Dorca will talk about the art project. So generally, Parcel B, as you know, is the fourth building project at the Public Market Redevelopment. There's the ME, Parcel D, Parcel C was in two pieces, and then Parcel B, which is an eight-story building, it's about 400,000 square feet. It's four levels of structured parking nestled between ground-floor retail and three levels of research lab space on the top three floors. The ground floor plan really, really completes the, this segment of Shellmount Street, which is more than a decade in the making and in the planning. This has long been envisioned as a double-sided retail street, and we are planning to line the ground floor with retail on both sides, and servicing and car access is from the back, which is something that we've revised since talking to you. Here's the view looking north on Shellmount Street. Parcel B, in context, it's a little... Parcel B, in context, it's a little bit lower than the Marketplace Tower, and it's a little bit taller than the future parcel A, which we're showing on the right. The building's main entry has a glazed and recessed notch at the top and bottom, and that's just to the south of center on the building, and you can see it right here at the center. And then there's sort of a glazed facade component, which goes all the way to the top. Here's the view looking down Shellmount Street from 64th. And you can see that it's sort of a middle ground in height and massing between public market redevelopment projects like parcel D on the right, Avalon's project, which is nearing completion, and the new R&amp;D building just across the tracks, which is a little bit taller. The design changes, I just wanted to highlight some of the key design changes since we've met, and sort of talk about what we heard from you and how we interpreted that. The first one was, you said, consider adding solar panels. A few of you said that, and great idea, we've done it, solar panels on the roof. You said, consider adding electrical vehicle spaces. Those are required by code anyway, so we've identified those on the plans. They're on each parking level, 2, 3, 4, right next to a vertical, vertical circulation core. You said, the retail should really be serviced from the back, and that's where we provide, we've revised the plan to provide the main servicing. We still expect some deliveries to come in through the front door, which is pretty typical for small retail shops. You said, you know, do not treat the east facade as the back, and we have not done that. We've actually treated the east and west sides in an equivalent manner. They use the same kinds of windows, the same sizes and shapes of windows, the same framing system. The garage treatment is the same on both sides. For us, we know this is going to get a lot of visibility, and we really want it to seem just like a front, just like you do. And in our, in our design strategy, it's, it's all the same stuff, wrapping all four sides. You also said, kind of reconsider the vertical circulation cores, sort of revisit them a little bit. We've added the windows to the stairs, which you said. We've also sort of brought some horizontal articulation on both the north and south cores to make it more like a part of the main building itself. You sort of thought that the landscape was a little undercooked, and it probably was at the time, so we've developed the landscape on both sides. There are some open areas where the building notches back, some places that, that's where we have bike parking. We've also got seat walls surrounding some trees. You also said, you know, provide some more detail on the storefronts, and really revisit the storefront design. So we spent a lot of time really focusing on the storefronts. There are some bigger pictures in the documents that you've got. But our main strategy was to sort of add some nice horizontal shadow lines at the top of the base, and we've sort of changed the configuration of the base material a little bit. And we've tried to refine the actual storefront that we're planning to put in. And I, and we've also added the lighting. We've articulated where the blade signs are and the signage zone. And I would add that this is our, what we're thinking is, this is the standard storefront. And we would expect, if there are eight to 10 stores over the course of years, some stores may want to replace this, and that's going to add quite a bit of variety. So we're starting with the standard that we would put in if there's no option by the time we build it. And then we would expect that some sort of variety naturally occurs with, with the retail occupants. A couple other sort of issues have come up since we talked, and I just want to identify those. One has been to sort of revisit and compare our current scheme with the PDP. And we looked at it from a couple perspectives. One is this sort of view from the west, and we actually slightly adjusted the location of the notch between the two main, building A and building B. It's a little more narrow now, but, but of course, the buildings, you know, the building on parcel A is 80 feet lower, so there's, there's a lot less massing than there was. You know, here's another view of that, where the notch location has slid slightly, and it's a little bit narrower, but on the south side, the development is, is much, much lower. And then we also kind of calculated the actual facade area that is, you know, facing right up to, right up to the train tracks. And when we did the math, we find that we're actually, this is our current proposal, this is proposal, the PDP. So we're actually more than 20% less in terms of kind of wall along the train tracks than what was originally approved. Then we also revisited the open space plan across the neighborhood, and there are some really great pedestrian connections, which will take you right from Amtrak and New Development east of the tracks, all the way to Christie Park, and sort of really cool pedestrian-oriented walkways, bridges, and we also think along Shellmount, which would be a really cool place to walk, because you'll have kind of neat shops on both sides. Then we also revisited the shadow studies. This is from the PDP. This is from the FDP. But sort of looking at it a little more closely, you know, one thing that inevitably happens is buildings cause shadows, we know that. The existing public market has a sort of unfortunate condition where it's, the street, Shellmount, is slightly angled to the northwest, which is not great in terms of actual sunlight hitting those facades. And then, we looked at both solstices and the equinox, and, you know, it's pretty limited to the actual hours of daylight that you get on those surfaces. But overall, you know, the new building that we're doing is going to get kind of great sunlight year-round. And those are, those exact studies which we can send. And then, that's it for me, and I can turn you over to Dorka. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, commissioners. So as, isn't mine right after the, no, that's all right. Thanks. I was just going to do these.
I'm like the special needs.
Yep, just use this. Great, thank you. So as Maru mentioned, the Art Master Plan has gone through the Public Art Committee process, and has been reviewed and approved, and is next going to the Community Development Director for final approval. And in that plan is a pool of artists, from which Mark and his team will be selecting, will be selecting up to three finalists per location to develop site-specific proposals. And from those proposals will, Mark and his team will be picking the final artist. So just, I'm just quickly going to go over the project goals. Really was to create a visual identity for the market, to really enhance the identity of the district, and really enhance, elevate it, and to serve as an attraction for both locals and tourists, and to commission vibrant, high-quality artwork, site-specific work, and is relevant to a broad audience, and to really activate and improve the street-level experience. So the curatoa vision was to commission fun, colorful, whimsical artworks that will draw folks to the site. There are five locations for the artwork. The first one that's going to be installed is going to be in the park. The second area is going to be the plaza, which will be the plaza service, as well as sculptures in that area. The next will be the building that we're here discussing, and the last area will be the plaza stairwell. Now, the last time I was here, I did present the artists for the west elevation. I don't know if you would like me to run through them again, or if you would like me to go directly to the east elevation. What would be the commissioner's pleasure?
Um, I, if every, actually, Chris, yeah, so we've, yeah, we had some commissioners that weren't here for the last meeting.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Let's run through the whole thing, thank you.
So the thinking along this side is that this is going to be a major draw for the public market and for the district as a whole. The idea would be to have artwork that potentially would have a light component to it. But any artwork that would be selected would be a work that would work both during the day and at night equally well. So the, the artists that we're looking at are internationally recognized artists. They're national artists. Christian Muller is a professor at UCS, at, in LA, in the New Media Department, University of LA. And he's done some very large-scale projects. This is actually down in San Jose. Erwin Werettel is based out of New York City, and he's an internationally recognized light artist. This was for a new science building. That's sort of a close-up, so you can get a sense. One of the issues that we're dealing with, with this building is potential load issues, so we can't have big, heavy artwork hanging on the building. Jacob Hashimoto is based out of LA. He's a Japanese-American artist. Does these very beautiful, this is an outdoor piece, but his work started as little Japanese paper kites. And he has moved into the public art world doing these large-scale projects. This is an interior piece of his. Jim Iserman is really a highly regarded, internationally known artist who lives in Palm Springs. And he does a lot of work that connects architecture and design, especially mid-century. This is a piece that he did for Metro Customer Center in Palm Beach. Mark Regelman is an artist that I really love. He just finished a big piece for the San Diego Airport. And each one of these sections are different colors and different types of airplanes. So I thought that was a really fun piece that he did for them. Ray King, another highly regarded, this is actually Morse code, quotes in Morse code. And that just kind of gives you a sense of what it looks like close-up. So these are all artists who have the potential to work with light, who are highly recognized artists, and who can deal with a complex location like this due to its load issues. And the last one is Sue Sunny Park. She's out of, she's a professor, and she's out of Chicago. She does these incredible light pieces. So now the east elevation. This is even a more challenging site, because as you know, the train tracks are right there. There's a very narrow egress. And so, being that we can't be putting cranes and other things on the tracks, the install will have to be from the top of the building. And so it's, there will be issues around loads for the back of that building. I, when we were discussing this location, I really wanted this location to speak to the community, and I wanted to make sure that we had these amazing local artists, that we prioritize local artists for this location. So out of the artist pool, one is from LA, the Restorall Bay Area Artist, one of which is a San Francisco artist, and the Restorall East Bay Artist. And they happen to be some of my favorite artists, so I was really excited that Mark and his team also like them. So Damian Gilly is the only one, he's from LA. And so the back piece will also, will have to be some type of a screen or mesh artwork. Emily Fromm, I'm thinking more of her doing some type of signage back there. She does these really fun pieces. She actually was just commissioned to do four large pieces for the San Francisco Airport for the new terminal. Fabiana Rodriguez is an Oakland-based artist who was just commissioned in San Francisco. This is going to be a new community center in the Mission. And the piece below is just one of the window sections there that you can see on the left side. It's going to be really gorgeous, so that's a glass piece. Leah Rosenberg is the San Francisco artist. This is a piece that she did, it's actually a series of seating nooks that she did for a nonprofit project in San Francisco called Sites Unseen. And this is her piece that she just did, completed for the SFO International Airport. And those are actually different materials, and all of those colors and materials relate to different locations, different experiences that you can have in San Francisco. So, you know, the, the red of a cherry tomato from Oakland, you know, different colors from different experiences that you have in, in the Bay Area. And there's a little, there's a description on the right side that identifies all the different colors and the different materials. So it's a really fun piece, it's very engaging. Lourdi Rodriguez is another East Bay artist. This is another, I don't know why I picked all these artists who did work at the airport, but this is another, this is a piece that was done for the United Terminal, where he created specialized maps for different parts of San Francisco. And this is just kind of, you know, to give you a sense of like, what potentially could be on, you know, using a mesh or a screen, you can kind of get the sense of what a screen would look like. This is a different kind of map, but on the back of the, on the back of the building. Miguel Arzabe is someone who normally works in paper, but has been starting to do some large-scale works. And again, this could be a really, really gorgeous screen-type experience. And all of these artists would be pulling from the site, the historical parts of the site, from the community, et cetera. So the work would be very special for this, for this neighborhood and for this community. That's it. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions for? What's the first one that you had for the east side? I didn't see him on the list.
Damian Gilly?
Yeah.
On which list?
This list.
Maybe it's been updated.
Okay. No, I was just, wanted to know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no questions for the applicant or Maru, I will, no, okay, go ahead.
Which, I have quite a few questions for the, and I don't know if we can bring up the plans that we have in our packet, but there's several pages I want to refer to. So I don't know if Chris needs to come up for that, or, we're kind of starting at the high level. I'm just kind of interested, on, the best photograph of this is on page L1.02, and it's about the screening for the area where the garbage would be, would be picked up. We don't have any details on how high that screening would be, or what the materials of that screen would be made of. So number one, L1.02.
Commissioner Keller, there are, there are actually page numbers on here, can, that's, there's like little page numbers?
Oh, 45, the little one, oh, okay. That would help, yeah, I didn't even know, yeah, so it's page 45. So on the right-hand edge where the garbage truck is backing up, it says there's a screen wall. And I was just wondering what the height of that screen wall is, and what the finish would be of, or if that's been decided yet? Yeah, you have to speak from the microphone, because there's people watching on TV that can't hear unless you're speaking the mic.
So, where are we about, page? What, which page number?
45 or L1.02?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to go in order, but that had a better rendition of what, so I picked that page instead.
There you go.
That's it. Over on the right-hand side of the screen where the garbage truck is backing up there, you'll see a...
Right here.
Yeah.
So that screen wall is behind hedge planting, and it's six feet tall, and it's horizontal wood.
Horizontal wood, okay.
Wood boards.
Okay. I'm going to have a few questions, so you might want to stay there. So on page 28, there's the outline of your current building, or there's the shadow or silhouette of your current proposed building, but there's a red outline about, of each one, and I don't know what that red outline is representing.
The red outline is, is the PDP-approved massing. Which is, is labeled.
Okay, I may have missed that. Then A3.7. So on page 32, well, no, let's see, I'm going to have to go back. Oh, so actually, back on page 28 again, which is A3.03, you talk about painted metal facade system, and then a painted plaster. Usually, what we've been getting in these things, it's just something that tells us what the percentage of stuck ore plaster is, and what the percentage of other finishes are. So, I can't quite determine where it is that you're pointing out that the plaster is going to be used, but in a rough guesstimation, with the metal panels and plastering, knowing that a high percentage is going to be the glass, and then the open garage forms, but in metal-to-plaster, what are we looking at in terms of percentage of use of the finish?
It's probably two to one.
Plaster being the higher number?
Metal being the higher number.
Metal being the higher number.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the plaster is sort of the exposed elements at the parking garage area.
Okay.
But nothing sort of above that would be.
Okay. And then, just probably more of a housekeeping thing, on page 32, I think you guys have your references for the metal wall system and the window system misidentified? Because the top of it says metal wall system, and it's pointing to a pane of glass. And then, the window system looks to be pointing towards a wall, but I.
So, here, 32?
Yeah.
Window system?
Let's see, that's, yeah, page 32, that's a, okay, maybe you guys corrected it, because my.
Yeah, because I have the same thing.
Yeah, mine shows that top item where it says above, where it says metal. Yeah, it's just flipped.
I think we've corrected it. Yes.
So, I just wanted to verify that. And that was answered. So, you guys mentioned on, I've got to get my numbers correct here now, so, I'm looking at A8.1, which is page 43. There is no metal sample, so, the finish of the metal, is it going to have a texture? Is it going to be smooth metal?
The plan is that it's smooth painted metal.
But it'll be kind of a matte finish, as opposed to something reflective?
Yes.
Okay. And then, you guys discuss a structural concrete, and you made a reference that it's not like board form. So, structural concrete would be a smoother finish to board form concrete? What would that concrete look like?
It's, in the photo here, in the photo, so, structural concrete is, is sort of what you might normally think of as normal, sort of foundation wall concrete, whereas board-formed is the sort of horizontal.
With the grooves in it.
Concrete where you see the grooves from, from wood form work.
Right.
So, not that.
Your structural concrete, it's pretty smooth without pockmarks, without like aggregate that has fallen out or anything. It'll be kind of a very smooth finish that will look finished, or?
It's sort of a medium.
Okay.
You know.
So, it'll have a more kind of.
A little rougher.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And, so, are the color samples shown on this display and in our packet, the actual colors you guys are proposing?
Yes.
So, no variation from that currently?
Nothing planned.
Okay. All righty, I think that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Commissioner Hidalgo, do you have questions?
Yeah, I have just one question. I think this is going to be from Mark. In the second letter from, I won't even try to pronounce the name, but the Labor Union 304's attorney letter. There's a sentence that says, "In light of further information provided by the applicant and commitments that would reduce formaldehyde emissions," and it goes on to say that they have no longer issues. Can you expand upon what the commitments were?
We said that we would build a project union, and we said that we would make sure, most, if there's any products in a building like this that has formaldehyde, it's usually in the casework and the cabinetry work, and so, we'd follow the standards that it's, I mean, a minimum. I think the specific standards are in your package in terms of what we would provide. So, those are the commitments we made.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions on this end? Commissioner Thompson, any questions?
Do you have anything? No.
Nope. Okay. I don't have any questions either. So, I, we'll open up the public hearing, so anybody wishing to speak on this item, please approach the podium and fill out a speaker slip. Please remember, you have three minutes.
Sorry? Yeah, three minutes, thank you.
Three minutes, thank you.
I'm Jeff Sears with Wareham Development. We have a pretty extensive memory lane of our own, since we've been owning and developing property in Emeryville for over 40 years. We are all for greater density at the marketplace. We like that it's evolving as a center of gravity. We think we have one across the tracks with our own campus that we call Emery Station. We also think, though, it matters a great deal how that density is deployed in the urban fabric to let these two important centers connect to one another. We're concerned that the major changes that we see, the building getting much longer, and therefore narrowing the gap between it and previously-approved parcel A, really eliminates a really key sort of visual connection between these two big centers of gravity. Yes, there's a little bridge that connects them, but there's no longer any material open space that lets a pedestrian who's using that area feel the two places at one time. It is very much of a wall that's facing towards the east. That gap in the prior proposal had been almost 180 feet wa, I'm sorry, about 180 feet wide, and we read it now as about 70 feet wide, before it had a single-story retail pad building with landscaping in it. And now, it's mostly a paved area with a trash dumpster in it. And we're just not sure that's a great connection of the public spaces we have on our side. We have the Amtrak Station, a large public plaza at grade, and a large raised plaza, publicly-accessible landscape plaza that connects to the edge of the bridge. We think it's really important that the two sides can see one another, feel one another, let our people see, you know, all the people that have the opportunity to go and eat lunch at the marketplace, be able to see through at all. I mean, we understand their buildings. We have our own buildings, so we're not against that. We also are concerned, it seems very clear to us that this building violates the ordinance about tower separation. Each of these buildings is more than 100 feet. We see it encroaching 30 or 40 feet into that separation distance, and it just isn't something that's even been considered here. And that's a city ordinance, so I'm not sure why it wouldn't be applicable or even measured. We have had architects measure us, and they say it's substantially encroaching. Again, this may not be a problem. We're just trying to allow enough space for the separate buildings to breathe and connect to one another as areas. We would be, we would prefer a building that was equal in mass, or even larger, taller, if we could have, again, some of that key visual connection space. The other thing that, I guess I'll make a comment, is this all has come so quickly to be considered. You know, just two and a half months ago, you know, for two years, this was a big, long parking garage. Two and a half months ago, it was a surface parking lot. One month ago, this proposal came up, and it just hasn't given, especially with the holidays, doesn't give you much time to absorb things and comment on them. We think the changes are enough that they deserve a little more time to let people weigh in. Thank you.
Thank you. Maru, can I actually ask you to clarify one point that he made about the tower separation? Is it the case that if a building is less than 100 feet, then the 100-feet separation doesn't apply?
I can clarify that. That's true. Both the proposed new building on parcel B and the existing or soon-to-be-completed Emery Station West building across the tracks, both of them are over 100 feet tall. However, that regulation that requires two buildings over 100 feet tall to be separated from each other by the tall, by the horizontal distance, that is the greater of the height of the two buildings, came into effect in 2013, when the new planning regulations were adopted. The Marketplace PUD was approved in 2008. The Emery Station West project was approved in 2010. So, both of these projects were approved before that regulation was in effect, so that regulation does not apply in this situation.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers wishing to speak tonight?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Nathan Hong with Avalon Bay. So, we are working with Mark, City Center, on the Avalon Bay Projects Parcel DNC, which is in construction now. So, I just wanted to come up here and support this project. I think, you know, based on everything I've seen, and in working with City Center as well, I think this mixed-use office, retail, parking building, really kind of, it's a, I think it's a great solution to some of the alternatives that were there now, and I guess, as I heard, it came up pretty quickly, but I think the plan is a good plan, and it really seems to fulfill the vision of the PDP, which was, which included this. And, you know, from an overall perspective, an office, retail, residential that we're building, I think that creates a real good synergy between all of the elements working together, which really make this area vibrant. I think one other element that I would highlight is, so, as we are also working with City Center on parcel A, having this building erected as soon as it could be would allow the opportunity to develop parcel A as soon as that can be developed. So, again, I just wanted to support the project.
Thank you.
I'm Jake Freed. I'm the president of Shiba Ramen Corporation, and I'm a practicing lawyer. I own two businesses in Public Market. My restaurant, Shiba Ramen, was the first new business to open in the redesigned food hall three years ago. We had a good experience. We decided to double down, and my family invested again to build a taproom and sake bar that we opened last year. We're excited about this building, and we want to support it. For the restaurants in this space, this concept, which is a really interesting, unique collection of restaurants, for us all to be viable, to succeed, to thrive here, we need more density, and we need it soon. We're especially excited about this building, the way it has changed from the original conception of parcel B, which was, I think, 26,000 feet of retail and about half the parking spaces. Now, we'll have a little bit less retail, but bringing in 750 science, life sciences, tech workers into this space that will regularly frequent the community we're trying to foster, we're trying to build, is critical for us. And there's nothing more we would like to see than this building get approved and get built as soon as possible. So, the vision that we have sort of invested in, my family has invested in, can come to fruition, and our businesses can thrive the way we want them to. And I think we have a couple of other members of the restaurant community here tonight that are going to say the same thing. You know, we hope you approve this, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to come back and talk about it. But we're excited about what they're doing, and the sooner we do it, the better the community will be. And I say that as someone who's invested twice in Emeryville in the last couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please fill out a speaker card. Thank you.
I'm Chris Bridge. I'm president of the Sicasa Restaurant Group. We have a restaurant up in the Oxbow Food Hall in Napa Valley, up in Napa, on the river. And we just recently built a second restaurant in Mark's project in the food hall. We're neighbors with Jake and his family, and also with Damon, who's going to come to speak as well. We fully support the project. As Jake said, we need more density. We need more visitors to the market. We think that the gathering place that Mark alluded to, which we've seen take significant form in the last years, they've continued to invest in the market. Traffic seems to be up. Business is getting better for us. We'd like to see it continue. We love Emeryville. We wanted to be here. We think it'll only help us be more viable and help the market and the neighborhood be more viable. So, we're, we're all in with Mark and his team, so we hope to get it approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you please fill out a speaker card, sir?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
My name is Damon Stanbrook. I own Pig in the Pickle Barbecue over here at the Public Market. These guys have covered it pretty well. We all support this project. We're looking forward to seeing Civic Center Realty Partners', you know, vision come to fruition. This is what we all came here for, to open our second locations. They pitched it to us. They've done a great job so far, and we think this, you know, I'm more excited about this, honestly, than the retail they had there. I think the life sciences job adds more to the area than a lot more retail. So, overall, I'm pleased, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? No, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the Commissioners for deliberation. Is there anybody who would like to start us?
Madam Chair, may I just make a comment for the Commission, just to clarify?
Sure.
We've had a lot of comments that have come in over the past 24 hours, and we had received comments from Lozo Drury on behalf of the union, and then, we had also received comments from the developer's attorney at Hall and the Knight. And then, late this afternoon, we received a comment from the union's attorney saying that they had withdrawn their earlier comments. And I just wanted to make sure that the Commission was sort of aware of all the comments that had come in, and that really what the Commission is tasked here tonight to do is to determine whether there's substantial evidence to apply the 2008 EIR to the current project and its staff recommendation, that there is substantial evidence based on the whole record. In your staff report as an attachment, there was a Kimbley Horn traffic study, as well as the environmental checklist. And there can be conflicting evidence, as long as the substantial evidence is there, then you can move forward.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Commissioner Thompson, would you like to start us off?
Sure. I think I wanted to just note that I definitely appreciate the applicant's changes. I think there have been some improvements in terms of the alignment of the front and with the crosswalk and the bike room. And it's, it's nice to see the program, the mixed-use program, and I think I agree with a lot of the restaurateurs about the ability to enhance the energy in the area with additional program. So, in general, you know, like a lot of the changes that you've made, I know that we're here to decide if it's consistent or inconsistent with the PUD, but I did want to add some just additional comments for you to consider as this project goes forward. In terms of the northern axis, I think one of the images that you actually showed, showed the alignment of that northern axis and how, or the northern facade, and how it is on axis with the road. And so, it is a quite important approach, and I was a little sad to hear that it's not necessarily an art area, and it's, you know, it's not really considered a primary facade. Also, I had, did look at the massing, and, and I did want to, just a comment in general, but this project exhibits it, that question about shadows and how to assess their impact on the public realm. It was talked about, which is great, but I'd love to hear more about the number of hours that the public realm gets sunlight. And the reason I want that kind of information is because there is a narrative going about how wonderful it is to walk down the street, if it's cold and windy and dark, I'm not sure, and I need more evidence. So, I think that's just a general comment for applicants in general. In terms of the consistency, we're going to vote on that. I don't have any comments regarding that, and I want to let my other Commissioners speak.
I'm still concerned about the bulk of the building along Shellmount Street. I think, I'm really excited about the art. I think that the uses are appropriate. I think that there should be more consideration given to lightening the building up, just to get some more reflective light down there into that, what's going to be kind of a dark between two tall buildings. But my major concern, last time, I did mention that I was disappointed to see that gap on the south end of the building, where we had 170 feet of low and open space, but the other Commissioners didn't seem to be too concerned about that. But at this point, parcel A is residential with a whole slew of residences with balconies facing that side of the building, and I know that that's not dedicated to, there's a whole public art plan, and that is not part of the public art plan, but I really feel strongly that it needs some kind of screening treatment, both on the north side and on the south side. So, on the north side, as you're approaching the whole core of the marketplace, you're not looking at open parking garage space, because I think, looking at the image that's on page 40, sheet A604, you're coming in looking at sort of a dark gaping presence there. So, I think that there needs to be some kind of additional screening. It may not be as unique and interesting as what's going to be on the long facades, but that needs, I think that that really needs to happen, and I would ask that that be a condition of approval. And on the other side, on the south side, you've got six floors or seven floors of apartment buildings, like 15, 20 apartments, looking out at that same view. So, I think that there needs to be additional screening on that side as well of the parking levels, because that's not going to be attractive to look at, and it's not going to be appealing. levels, because that's not going to be attractive to look at, and it's not going to be appealing. Screening the garbage pickup from, making some kind of a screening that's visible from, so that the garbage pickup is not visible from the top, would also be something that I'd like to see. Those are my comments at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner Hidalgo, would you like to go next?
Just in general, thank you for following our recommendations from the past meeting. I like the overall design, and I really don't have any comments beyond that.
You guys must be forewarned that I need a lot of time or something. Charlie, as I get closer to a part of this, I'm going to ask that we have the overhead. But, so to start off my comments, I really, it is my deepest belief that the success of the entire marketplace development and the neighborhood and the success of our city hinges on the sum of the parts of this development, and in order for the food halls to be viable, for the apartments to be special places to live, and finally, to get a grocery store in place, what we build on Parcel B is critical. I believe that what's being proposed is the right thing, it's the right mix, the use of the building makes sense, and the public market as a whole, for the long-term success, this is the right thing to do. So, I want to give my comments on the letter received from the General of Wernham Development. But first, I do want to reiterate my ongoing respect and appreciation to Wernham for what they've done and contributed to our community. They were part of our community in the early days when Emeryville was not such a sure thing, but in regards to the current proposal of Parcel B, I think you guys missed the mark on some of the things in your letter, and I think Charlie explained the mentioning of the tower that doesn't apply, and it was made clear that that is not an issue. But Charlie, if I could have the overhead, I'm going to... So, to begin with, while I agree with Mr. Sears and Mr. Robbins, Parcel A, which is what is on the screen here, is an approved FDP. But I would agree to the statement made in the letter that by using this as our connection to the bridge, we're going to create a tall, narrow canyon. As this image shows, what we're going to have is an open, south-exposed, daylighted pathway. There's only two stories of apartments on the higher end of this step, when you get up to that end of it, coming from across the bridge. There's going to be eyes on the street, we're going to have a grand staircase, as grand as the one on the east side, and a very attractive streetscape. So this other picture kind of shows more what that is going to look like as you're actually coming off the bridge, heading towards the public market. You see people on their balconies, the both apartments, courtyards face this space, and this is more for Commissioner Hidalgo, and I was hoping Commissioner Young would be here because they weren't here when this was approved, but I think the letter gave a misrepresentation that this was going to be seven stories on each side, and it was going to be dark, but as you could see on the left side of this image here, it's a two-story apartment building, fully landscaped, so I think that's just the point I wanted to make, that where the grand staircase is going to come down is going to be a grand staircase. And I always look towards Commissioner Donaldson for our landscape experience, and I agree that what we had there was a larger patio or plaza and courtyard, but what I do want to, you know, bring people's awareness to is the fact that there was still a garbage pickup in the same area. There wasn't really a seating plaza area, we had a single pad restaurant in there, which you can't see in the drawing here, is this restaurant was going to have outdoor dining. So along with the restaurant itself, it was going to, illustrate here, it was going to have outdoor dining, which was going to further restrict this outdoor space. And that would go around and through here. So, what we're actually losing is not as much as what we're gaining in having an appropriate-sized building and what is being proposed. So with the previous FDP, I wasn't too happy with the loss of the commercial space that we were going to have from the original PUD. So with this plan, I'm very happy to see the commercial space return, because I think that is a true mixed use. We're not just having restaurants or retail here, we are now having a total different mix, and I think that's very viable. So I agree with Mr. Stephens, and the current plan provides a better outcomes with a broader mix of uses. While losing the restaurant pad and the small amount of spaces in the corner, I feel overall that this is a better plan, a better use of the site, and provides a broader activity level of people, spaces, the shops and the restaurants. And then the one other thing I want to talk about, the big, single pad, is I think of all the things that we would have a hard time getting rented, is a single restaurant pad. We have the Elephant Bar at Bay Street, which still hasn't found a tenant since Elephant Bar left. There are two to three restaurants on the upper-level Bay Street that, when they lost their original tenants, hasn't been replaced. So I think we end up with a space here that would not be very active, because it would be pretty empty and dead. So I think by bringing the square footage and the size of this building to this plaza, we do lose a little, but it wasn't as well landscaped as we had liked. It provided light, is probably, and more air, and et cetera, as I see. But the issue with that is, by reducing the building or stepping back to preserve that open space, what we do is we also reduce the amount of rentable square footage in this building, and when you're looking at tech industry, whether it's biotech or high-tech, today's standards, from what I understand, is you need a basic 140,000 square feet rentable space to make a floor plate viable, and that's kind of what this has, and when you start cutting back this building, then you start cutting back the opportunities for who they have for renting it. So I think it's very important that we stay on that. Then the last thing I want to show here is, again, I diverge from Mr. Sears and Mr. Robbins in the fact that the architectural read of this building, I feel, in fact, accurately voices the vernacular of the Emeryville style. And what I've often mentioned in thinking that is the Emery Tech Building on 65th Street. I think this is one of my favorite buildings in town. I think it's one of the best adaptive reuse buildings that we've done in here, and this is very, very similar to what we're proposing here. This vernacular can also be seen at Pixar. Both the buildings at Pixar have this similar vernacular, and even our very own administrative building for the city hall here has this linear, simple glass vernacular. So, I don't believe that it's out of character with our city at all. I believe this is pretty much the Emeryville language that we want to see more of, I think, in our city. So with that, I'll finish my comments at the dais. So my last comment in regard to the letters from Wernham Development is the east side of the building, and I don't understand how, if they just didn't understand where the art was going to be, but to me, I think spending a quarter of a million dollars on artwork is not treating that building like a backside, and I don't feel that it would turn its face to the tracks. I think that we're addressing that by requiring them to put art there. So for the developer, what I'd like to do is give you the things I did like. And first, I want to thank you for retaining the retail. I know that was a real sticky point for you, and you didn't want to do that, and you actually even expanded it from 14,000 to 15,000, so I appreciate that. I think over time, we'll see it pan out, I'm hopeful of that. I like the number of electric vehicle charging stations you've put in, I think the location works well for those. Thank you for daylighting the staircases. Aaron's not here, but he's the one I spoke to directly for that. The motorcycle parking is good. Thank you for showing the sidewalk winks, even though they're already installed, it's nice to know what our actual usable sidewalks are, we don't get that as often as I would like. I think I'm very comfortable with the location of the short-term biking place, part, biking places you have on the north and south side. I like the seat wall planters, that does actually give us some place, you know, where they are going to have plants, they will actually be active, you'll be able to sit there and use that space. And the main thing is, this is all in support of our need for encouraging people to use public transit, so having 700 employees here where they can take one of the buses that we now have, at least five lines going through Emeryville, they have the Amtrak they can take, they have the Emery go around, so it's very important that we do this type of density and this mixed use in our transit corridor. I would like, definitely want to support my two commissioners on the end about doing something with the north and south side, just seeing those parking areas as you come down the street is not very attractive, and I think if we could do some, doesn't have to be artwork, but maybe something that makes them look like windows without glass, or, I don't know, just something to kind of dress that up with, kind of, because it's kind of a shame to put all that money and effort in those beautiful art pieces and then have these bookends that just really kind of drop off, so I would definitely support that. So, one, two recommendations I'd like to make is, I'd like to request as an additional condition that the finishes and colors shown in the packet, as I clarified with the architect, remain as the finishes, that if they do wish to come back and change any of that, that it does come back to the commission. It doesn't have to come back as a formal meeting, but I think if the planning director can do as he's done, you're puzzled. So they've given us a color palette, I want that to be the chosen color palette, and if they choose to change that, I'd like the conditions of approval to say that Charlie has to come back to us and ask if we'd like to have a meeting, just like he's done with the two things at...
Oh, okay. They can be administratively approved as long as no commissioner requests...
Exactly. Just like you did the equipment on top of the transit center and the...
Well, that would be our process for approving minor modifications.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah. And then the other thing, lastly, what I'd like to do is make a request to Mr. Stephens, and not a condition, but I would like you to entertain the thought of meeting with city staff and meeting with the owner of 5850 Shellmount Street, the property to the south of your property, and really meet and discuss the potential for making all of those projects more cohesive rather than developments designed in a silo, because I know there are some opportunities that Mr. Sherman gave of about land swaps, moving the street to the entrance of the west side of the public market where your awning is and et cetera. So there's been some discussion of some opportunities of working within those, the city-owned property, this property at 5850, so I'd at least like to have you entertain the thought of meeting with the property owner and the city and see about what we can do to make these projects more cohesive rather than just separate property line developments. Very good. And I think I can let you guys go.
All right. My turn now, I guess I'll just start off by saying thank you for addressing the commissioners' comments. I was really happy to see that you folks listened to what we had to say, and, you know, in particular, I really appreciated the solar panels and the windows on the ends of the buildings, I think that did, does do something to lighten up those stairwells. I agree that this is a really good use of the site, the mix of, the amount of retail that you have proposed, and the, you know, R&amp;D lab spaces up on the top, I think, is really good, and as you can hear from your neighbors, they're really excited, so, you know, that's always something good to hear, that people are excited about a project like this. I do think that this is a sophisticated building design, even though it's a big block, you know, considering that there's four levels of parking that you're covering with art, that's a great way to deal with the parking, and the pedestrian level has an attractive storefront kind of system that you all have chosen, and I like the dark color palette and material palette, and I hope that, you know, as you folks choose the art, that you choose something that's colorful to kind of address some of the concerns that people have had with the dark palette and the shadow issues. So I think that you have an opportunity there to kind of deal with those issues with the art that you're, you know, having on the building. And I also think that the backside, the railroad side, has been addressed pretty well, and, you know, considering that you guys are going to have art along that elevation, it does not feel like a back of the building to me, so just thank you for that, and I guess I will leave it at that and ask if anybody would like to make a motion on the project.
Do we need to go through the conditions and see what, if they have met the, or can we just, I mean, I'm ready to make a motion that we approve, as long as we've met all the...
Met all...
In the comments, there were some condition questions.
Right.
If the commission wishes to add or modify any conditions of approval, that needs to be made explicit in the motion.
Well, I would move approval with the conditions that the north and south parking levels have some kind of artistic, not, well, artistic's the wrong word, some kind of aesthetically pleasing screening on them, some treatment, whether, you know, I'd love to see a green wall, but I don't know whether that was, is what it would be, but I would like to see that added as a condition for both sides.
And as long as the painting palette or the color palette is not going to be just administratively approved without coming back to the commission, I don't need to make that a condition, if that's what we normally do, so...
Yeah, I don't think that would be appropriate as a condition. If, I mean, generally, would I, when I get a proposal from an applicant to change something from what was previously approved, I try to judge whether I think that issue was significant or not to the commission, and if it seems like something the commission really didn't focus on and didn't care that much about, then typically I would just approve it without consulting with you. If it's something I know you care about, and now I definitely know that you care about this, I would absolutely consult with you before approving it administratively.
Would love to have that also explicit about, well, not necessarily in the condition of approval, but about the screening on the ends.
Well, I think that needs to be a condition.
And I think we can make that a condition.
That the screening be a condition, but that we could take a look at it.
I see what you mean, so, yeah, so that there is a review process built into that.
Yeah, that would have to come back as an agendized item, if you wanted to review and approve it before it got installed. I think it would be better to trust your planning director, and just say that it needs to be...
So Commissioner Donaldson, do you feel that it has to be something that screens as tightly and as much as the artwork, or if it just makes the ends more, for me, if they just made the ends more aesthetically pleasing, that it just didn't look like an open parking structure, I think I'd be fine with it, and a green wall would be great. I don't know how well that would work on the north side of the building, but maybe on the south side they do that, and the north side they do something else?
Yeah, no, I don't think it needs to be totally screened. I think it needs to be treated in a way that it doesn't look like an open parking garage that you're looking at. It looks dark inside, that has this gaping presence.
Right, and so if that's the only condition that we need, I would second Commissioner Donaldson's motion.
Okay, so I basically have that to approve it as recommended by staff, including the changes by the deputy fire marshal, with an added condition that the north and south elevations have the parking levels screened in an aesthetically pleasing, with an aesthetically pleasing treatment, which could be a green wall. Did you want to add that? No? Aesthetically pleasing treatment.
Yes.
And as well as, go ahead, Chair.
So, regarding the green wall, would that be something viable, because, I mean, I'm seeing some head shaking over there.
I think what we'd like to do is work this design, I agree with you, we can make that look, both the north and the south ends look better. We'd like to do it in conjunction with what the artwork ends up being on the east and west side, and so to make sure that this blends and works. So it could be, it could be some art, it could be more screening, so it looks like a building with, you know, windows and such, it could be colors, but we'd be happy to work with Charlie Maru to come up with a design that they feel, the staff feels, that works overall.
And I would like to say that the construction that you've done so far has shown really high quality and good materials and good taste, and I, you know, I think that you're going to do something nice there, but I think we just need to say that that needs to be done.
Right, we're fine with that, thank you.
All right, Charlie, so I think maybe we get rid of the living wall part of that condition, and I just want to say for the record, I do trust that you will do a good job, Charlie, and, oh, I had one more thing, but it slipped my mind.
The only question I had is, is it worth putting in that it gets coordinated with the art?
How about this? The north and, the open parking on the north and south elevations shall be screened with an aesthetically pleasing treatment that is compatible with the treatment... an aesthetically pleasing treatment that is compatible with the treatment, screening treatment on the east and west elevations.
Okay.
Is that...
I'm okay. I'm okay with that.
Just a reminder, we'd like to also change the applicant name, too.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I guess, I'm not sure that needs to be part of the motion, but, well, I guess it doesn't hurt.
Yeah.
All right. Does that cover everything?
This for me?
Let me just make a note to change the applicant name, so we don't forget to do that. All right, you ready to vote on this? Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hidalgo?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioners Young and Guerrero have excused absences. Chair Barrera?
Aye.
Five ayes. The application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
All right. Thank you very much to everybody.
Thank you. We're excited to see the art, too.
Yeah. All right, moving on. Next is planning commissioner comments. Does anybody have any comments?
Just a quick one, since I'm newer to the commission, just a reminder to our fellow commissioners, as a CEQA practitioner, as we go through these various documents and we get comments, to really review what people are commenting on the CEQA document and if it's actually raising issues with evidence and whether or not the comment actually may or may not have merit, because you will get a lot of individuals that comment, the lawyers that may have agendas beyond actual environmental protection, and we need to be reminded that our purpose for the city is to assess CEQA impacts and how things are impacting the environment, and not necessarily other agendas under CEQA.
And is this in particular, reference to anything in particular?
Not that I want to say.
Just checking.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? No? All right, then the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.